Okay. I now call to order the regular meeting of the Belvedere Planning Commission. We'll start with open forum. Open forum is an opportunity for any citizen to briefly address the planning commission on any matter that does not appear on the agenda. Comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Matters that appear to warrant commission consideration may be agendized for further discussion at a later meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak during the open forum? Nancy, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, moving on, are there any reports?
I have no reports. You might want to ask if any of the planning commissioners have reports either.
Is, are there any reports from the planning commission? Okay.
No.
Okay, so moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items that are considered to be non-controversial. Unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the council, staff, or public, the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion. Items removed will be considered in the sequence that they appear on the agenda. I will now ask whether any member of the planning commission would like to remove a consent calendar item.
I'd like to remove two Golden Gate for discussion.
Okay, I would also like to remove seven Bellevue for discussion. Do you mind if we start with seven Bellevue? Okay.
What, excuse me, Chair.
Oh.
Yeah. Well, we need a motion for the minutes. So the minutes are on the consent calendar, so you could ask for a motion for item one on the consent calendar.
May I have a motion to adopt item one on the consent calendar?
I move. Adopt item number one on the consent calendar.
No, second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so seven Bellevue. Rebecca, have you received any comment on this item?
I have not.
Okay. So I just had a couple, just a couple minor points on this one. I, I, there's an oak tree that is right next to where the driveway improvement is being planned, and I would like to, as a condition of approval, make sure there's tree protection for the oak. And then I believe that this project also needs a revocable license for a portion that is in city property. So I'm fine approving as conditioned and then just asking them to prepare a revocable license application for city council. Are there any other questions or comments from the commission on this item?
No. The public forum, any comments from the public?
Are there any comments from the public on this item?
There are none on Zoom.
Okay, so we need a motion. Okay, can I get a motion, please, for seven Bellevue?
I make a motion to approve seven Bellevue with the condition of tree protection on the oak and a revocable license for the driveway.
Second.
Oh, sorry, am I asking for?
You asked for, say, all in favor?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
So.
I am gonna.
Make a note in the minutes that Ashley's leaving because she owns property within 500 feet of the project. So for two Golden Gate, I had just a couple of comments. When I was looking at the survey and looking at the revocable license, I noticed that in the survey, there's a fence that's on city property, their fence in the back towards San Rafael Avenue. Jags into city property, and it's not on the 2006 revocable license to have a fence there, and it's not on the current revocable license request to have a fence. So it's my understanding that we don't allow fences on city property. No? Yes? So we don't allow it? Oh, okay. So with that in mind, I would say that we would have to condition the approval on the portion of the fence at the rear of the property to be moved onto the property line or on the property.
Pat, sorry, are you talking about the portion that sort of goes right along San Rafael Avenue?
Well, it's up, it's up by their property. So if you look at their property line, which is way above San Rafael Avenue.
Yeah.
There, that's not the survey, that's not the survey. If you look at the survey, there's a line that has an X in it, and that's the fence, and the fence at certain points dipped down into the city property. It's not much, but it is something that the city does not allow.
Yep, got it.
The other comment I had was on the spotlight that's there. It's an adjustable spotlight, and we normally don't allow to have adjustable lights because they can be adjusted into someone else's vision. So if you could choose a different motion spotlight that is not adjustable would be preferable, so that can be part of the final landscape and lighting plan. Those were my concerns. I, does anyone else have questions on the project? Seeing none, I'd like to open up the public forum. Did anybody wish to speak or the applicant wish to say? Is there anyone on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom with their hand raised.
Then may I have a motion for two Golden Gate with the two conditions on the approval?
Yeah, let me try this, Pat. I've got one of them. The a condition that any portion of a fence that is on city property be moved on to the actual property owner's property. And the second condition that the adjustable spotlight be made non-adjustable.
That's perfect.
Subject to final landscape plans.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Somebody get Ashley?
If the window assembly will sit considerably like more proud as a new larger assembly than the windows that are existing are relatively recessed back in the, in the wall frame, creating like, I think what is one of the beautiful aspects of the design is that sort of variation of the, of the, of the facade. I wonder.
So the new walls will be not proud of the existing post structure. The, the increased depth will go into the envelope of the building, not go outside. And the low end windows have about a four inch recess from their frames, so they will be recessed within their, within their stops, in effect.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Okay. So now we open public comment. Are there any comments from members of the public? Or on Zoom?
And I'd just like to remind people on Zoom, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand on Zoom. No one from the, in the audience would like to speak?
Yes, please, please.
Come up to the microphone.
You have to come speak.
Yep. Yes, please, thank you.
My name is Nancy Barber, and I live at 81 Acacia Avenue. And I want to say how thrilled I am that the new owners of 501 have chosen to save this historical landmark and turn it into a beautiful home. And I want to really thank them and let them know what they're preparing, proposing is a gift to the city. That said, I want to just point out some of the problems of having the garage on Acacia. And as you can see from the drawing, it is taking away a space and a half. And also, if there's going to be a parking for the ADU, there's, there's going to be another car on the street. And so that's kind of what this illustration is, is trying to convey. And so the owner of 41 Acacia, right behind the drive, the new proposed driveway, that's his place to park. And so he's going to have to find another place to park, and he can park in front of his house because other people along the street do that. And so this is kind of the illustration of like that, what that creates. And so just to let you know that, that, that there's going to be an issue with the cars on the street, and once again, the ADU, it's going to add even another car. And then I met with the architect yesterday, and I was walking around to the San Rafael side. And from what I understand, I'm kind of, everybody on Acacia is kind of new to this project since Monday, and so we're, we're trying to kind of understand the scope. And so I was, I kind of understood that there was a blind curve from the stop sign on San Rafael Avenue. And so I was just down there and thinking about it, and I didn't realize that you have redesigned this, this area and kind of, you're going to do what I'm suggesting. Because if you remove the plants and the big boulder along, in the three areas along San Rafael, then you open up the site and you can see the cars coming around. So it's not a blind corner, and it's not that dangerous. And so and I, I don't think there's that many cars that go by this space all that much. And so I just don't think it's going to be that dangerous. But I understand you've looked at it a lot longer than I have, so. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like, yeah, please come up?
I could just remind people to please use the mic because people on Zoom cannot hear. If you don't, thank you.
Can you hear me? Does that work?
Yes, thank you.
I want to echo Nancy's comments. I think it's fantastic that they're preserving the church and such a beautiful historic structure. My name is Jeff Blum. I live at 41 Acacia. Forty-one Acacia, coincidentally, is also a former church. It was the former St. Stevens before it moved up the hill on Bayview and Golden Gate. My parents have lived in the house before me for over 50 years. I grew up there and recently moved back into the home with three young kids. As it was referenced in earlier comments, my home does not have a garage or a driveway, which means my primary parking spots are on the street itself. There are actually a few homes on Acacia without driveways or garages. The street is very tight with just enough parking allocation for its residents and on only one side of the street. Not surprisingly, my concern with the San Rafael proposal is that the garage will take up one or more spots on an already congested street that is also short of parking. I expect that an elimination of the parking spot will shift cars into our neighbor's spots, their cars into their neighbor's spots, and have a cascading impact for the entire street. The location of the proposed garage is directly in front of my home, eliminating my part, primary parking spot that I currently use for my family. There are also many children on the street, and I'm concerned that this will add more regular traffic to a street that is already tight and filled with cars. I appreciate the consideration of alternative locations of the garage due to the impact that it will directly have on me, my family, and my neighbors on the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Hi, my name's Rod Hall. I'm, I'm at 19 Acacia Avenue. I'll just say this is the nicest I've ever dressed to play guitar next door, and it's very strange to come over here and talk after, after doing that. Having said that, I guess I'd open my comments the same way that everyone else has. We are, this is a public service that Marcel and his family are doing. I think this is you. So I've texted with him, but I haven't necessarily not, oh, there you are, okay. So I think that all of us are very supportive of it. And I don't know if you've all been in that building, but it's absolutely beautiful. I mean, it's an amazing piece of architecture and preserving it, I think, is an incredible public service. So first of all, thank you, Marcel. That's, I think that as we've looked at this, we've lived on Acacia for 14 years, and I would just, I picked up a few things, all comments I'll make, but I'll just say that generally speaking, parking on Acacia has been a problem. It's a problem because it's a very dense neighborhood. The houses were built in the early 1900s. There were no cars. The, the street is narrow, and so you end up with, and most of the garages that are built there are very narrow, very difficult to get into. I don't know if you guys have gone in there, but a lot of people are not using them actively. So parking is an issue. Then it's, it's proximate to both Belvedere Park, the town, the city hall, and the SF Yacht Club. So is, so any kind of event that occurs at any of these places, you get over natural overflow parking into Acacia. So you have a pretty serious parking issue there. Oh, I would also say I wanted to commend the staff. I'm sure the staff have done a ton of work on this. So I don't, you know, none of us mean to demean any of that work. I'm sure that there's been a lot of work done. A couple of things that I would just kind of pick up on here. One of the comments is this steeper grade, I think. I didn't catch your name because the mic wasn't on, and my hearing's not as. Steve, nice, nice to meet you. What Steve had commented was the, the grade increases, and I think if you, if you go walk Acacia and you turn right down onto San Rafael, you're going to see that that grade is so steep that you actually can't use a car down it. You have to swing left into the left oncoming lane on Acacia to turn. So it's a very dangerous right turn off of Acacia. It's blind. We don't, we have much less than 150 feet. We have about 10 feet of clearance there of sideline. So that grade, to me, seems like potentially something to think about for the city as just a safety issue. It's not just a problem for the sideline on a garage exiting on San Rafael. It's a problem for people living on Acacia. So that's one thing that I kind of picked up on. The other thing I would point out, there's a crosswalk right where San Rafael driveway would be. I walk my dog down there all the time. That crosswalk, oh, gosh, I'm out of time. That crosswalk is also something you should think about. That's not in adherence with state guidelines, and yet the public is expected to cross right there where that driveway would be, and we do it all the time. There's not a lot of traffic there, so it's not that difficult. The, the last thing I would say, just because I, you know, I'm out of time, is I think that probably, I've heard a lot of commentary on the San Rafael issues and access to San Rafael. I haven't heard much about parking studies or any kind of analysis that's been done on Acacia, and I would ask the commission to consider maybe some kind of a parking study to, you know, offset some of the safety issues that have been highlighted here for the San Rafael entrance. So thanks for, thanks for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Hello, my name's Adam McNeil, and I am at 51 Acacia, and I live with my wife and two children. I already wrote into the commission about my comments on it, so I won't repeat that. But I appreciate Marcel beautifying this, this church. The only thing that I want to say again is Acacia is going to be very impacted by this proposed project. And essentially, I'm seeing it as, and I heard this earlier in other comments, privatizing public access to space, and I, it seems like Belvedere does not generally like that. And this will be privatizing two public parking spaces that are now used by Acacia Avenue. As others have said, Acacia is narrow. I'm worried that this is going to cause potentially emergency vehicles not being able to get there. It's very hard to turn around if we have cars coming in and parking and causing everybody to move down. Right now, I have to turn around in Nancy's driveway, unfortunately. And, but when there's a car in front of Nancy's driveway, it is very hard to turn around, and I'm concerned that that's going to be the same for emergency vehicles, the more cars we have on Acacia. And we heard a lot about the impact on San Rafael and the safety. I think the, the argument was, trust me, it's dangerous, but we haven't heard from an expert on that. I would like to hear from somebody who is not, who has actually put in some time to study it. But I appreciate that, that they have started this process. And last thing, I'm not sure that notice was proper for this hearing. Us on Acacia, we only recently found out about this, and the notice that was received didn't really say anything about what was going on on Acacia. Fortunately, Marcel reached out to my wife, and that's how we heard about that, and kind of started talking with the neighborhood about it. So that's, thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask one question before you leave? If you have cars parked on either side of the street, can you turn around, or do you have to go all the way to the end and make a U-turn?
You would have to go to the end or back out, like essentially to where the spots are on Acacia and San Rafael in that corner, and hope that there's not cars parked.
But typically, if you've got cars on both sides, people who live on Acacia go all the way to the end and turn around. It's, it's a driveway.
It's, it's Nancy's driveway, which I feel bad about having used, but there's no.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have any other? Yes, please.
Hi, everyone. My name's Fred Bird. I live at 27 Acacia. So yeah, reiterating a lot of the other comments, very grateful for the thoughtful building. Just on the parking, like, two, two points I wanted to mention. One is like the proposal that was offered by the applicant to expand the pad. Is there some way to condition the application on that actually happening? The other option I was thinking about was.
Could you please speak into the microphone?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other option I was thinking to help the parking situation overall is often the spaces are used inefficiently because as cars come and go, you end up with large gaps between the cars that are not big enough for a car, but wasting space. And so potentially, it would be an option for the whole street to actually mark the spaces, you know, not designate them for anyone's particular use, but just ensure the space is used efficiently. So I know this probably isn't the exact form to consider that, but just wanted to float it as an idea.
So, sorry, are you proposing, like you see elsewhere around Belvedere, where there's, where there's lines sort of indicate, like you, you know.
To maximize the efficiency of the space.
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said the first time. What was your first point? Could you repeat that?
Was to make sure that the application be conditional on the addition of the spaces on the corner of San Rafael Ave and Acacia, which I think the applicant has offered to do, just make sure that was part of the consideration.
Thank you.
That was everything. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, please.
Hi, I live at 31 Acacia, and I've lived there for 12 years. And we do have a serious parking problem. And I feel like it would be detrimental if this structure was open where they want to open it. And there's a lot of new kids in the, on the block. They ride their bikes, and it's just been a problem since we've moved there. But I'm so happy to live there. I don't like to complain, but I think, I think it's a bad idea. And I'm just going to keep it short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, I have Mr. and Mrs. Bennett who would like to speak. You, you should, you guys should be able to speak now.
Good, thank you. This is Mr., this is Leslie Bennett, and let me speak first. We're in Honolulu, and thanks for giving us the opportunity to make a presentation. My question is not so much the issue. I want to know, when I brought the property 31 Acacia in 1970 and had the property surveyed, my surveyor told me that my property line went halfway into the street. So has the city actually looked at the survey property for the church? And is the church, is the street actually into the church property at the present time? Or should the city property be into the church? Should the street actually be on the church property farther in than is presently allowed by the location of the street? So my issue just is, has the city looked at this? What is the survey? Is the street right? Is the street actually, should the street actually, is the property for the church actually not as much as is presently up to the level of Acacia Avenue? So I'd just like the city to look into this. In terms of turning around on Acacia Avenue, the garbage trucks and all the delivery trucks have to back into Acacia. Nobody can turn around on Acacia except the residents who are doing it. So that, that is the present status. So thank you for. So thank you for that question. I'd love to know if the city has the survey of the property and is the street presently actually on city property or is it on my property?
Hello, am I on? I hope I get my three minutes too. We're two different people, but the thing that I really liked that was said tonight was, was there as much attention paid to the Acacia side of this as the San Rafael side? And the other thing I wanted to say is, what's the Farley House parking? And the ability of people to come around the curve or whatever? We have a huge parking for Farley House already. And the other thing is, has anyone in the city council, the, the planning commission and Sammy and Rebecca, have you ever driven on Acacia? Have you ever driven and then tried to get out of Acacia? Can I see a show of hands of how many people have actually been on that street with their cars? And went in and went out. I didn't see the two city employees. Then you'll see.
I've only walked. I'm being honest. It's very close to City Hall. I'm not going to drive to Acacia.
Oh, well, lucky you not to drive to Acacia. Because if the driveway comes up from San Rafael and would come perpendicular to the street, there's got to be a very wide arc for that car from the proposed garage to turn right and even to get out. That would mean that the person that would park across, I guess in front of 41 would have to get out of there. So the person coming up and turning right would have enough room to turn right and get out. Has anybody looked at that? I think that's very essential to looking at an exit onto Acacia Avenue. Otherwise, I'm very in agreement of what other people have brought up. The kids, the parking, no garages on that street and the narrowness, the very narrowness of it. And the fact that there's a lot of parking for the Farley House. And I don't think that was even considered a dangerous place. And so I, I wish you would look up at our part of the, the quotient for this proposal. Oh, and I also want to ask, how come they can have a variance? You know, that's usually such thing with the city planners when people want variances. And especially in this area that is so tight, how come they could be offered a variance? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else on Zoom? Okay, we have, we have someone here.
There's no one on Zoom.
Hi, I'm Judith James and I live in Farley Place, Farley House. 515 San Rafael, right next to the property that's being developed. I have to say that that blind curve running down the hill is one of the most dangerous places that I have ever been. That crosswalk is extremely dangerous. I walk it all the time. People come around the, the curve, bicycles and cars going so fast that they can't stop. They really, they scream their brakes and, you know. I know it's a difficult situation with parking on both ends of it. But I have to say, it's, it's, that's a pretty dangerous way for the owner and his household to have to go in, not only for him, but also for a general traffic situation. It, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other people who wish to speak? Okay, so closed public comment. And I will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Pat, would you like to lead us off?
Sure. So I, I have one question for staff. The gentleman who spoke about putting lines for parking, that kind of thing, expanding the parking down by San Rafael. So there's an extra spot or whatever that can get in there. Is that something, since this is all, you know, public works, is, is this something that we can actually condition on without?
I would not be comfortable speaking for public works. I know those, yeah, there's for many reasons.
Yeah, I, I think.
The striping and the additional spot.
Yeah, I, I think the striping is a great idea. I don't know when Acacia is ready for slurry, but that's like the perfect time to do it. But it does help with parking that somebody doesn't park funny and kind of take a park and a half car space when, if they parked properly, another car could get in. I, I just think that was a very good suggestion. Anyway, going on, I read the staff report. I visited the site with the property owner. I've spoken to the architect. I've spoken to some of the neighbors on Acacia. And I want to say that I understand and feel for the property owners on Acacia. They have a situation that exists on many roads on the island where garbage trucks have to back down, delivery trucks have to back down. I was on Cliff Road and I had a concrete truck backing down on top of me. So on some roads, that's the only way deliveries and items can be delivered. If you're not in a car that can turn around. Also areas that were developed early in the city when there were no cars. There are no garages and as on the island in many spaces, places, it's, parking is at a premium. It's difficult and but the no parking was there for a very long time. I think that some suggestions that were made tonight were, is very well worth the Acacia community following up with Public Works. And I think, speaking on the project, I think that the applicant and the architect have worked very hard to maintain the original aesthetics of the Calister Building. I think their addition of the garage and the not to be spoken of ADU is very well done. I think the, the copper roof on top of both buildings is going to be absolutely stunning for everyone to see. And it's going to be beautiful as it ages. I think that the approach to this building, which had many prospective ideas that came forward, that this is the ideal solution for both the city and the community. I think that it's been approached in a very sensitive and delicate manner. I think that the applicant is very much trying to do as much as he can to minimize the impacts to the neighbors and agreeing to do additional things to attempt to satisfy some of the requests from neighbors. And the, if you actually look at the survey, the property is very, so the church takes up a big portion, it's very difficult to add a garage that would meet the setback and due to the shape of the lot. And because people with a home do have the right to a garage. And when you have a single family residence, and this is a new single family residence, the code says you have to have two car parking. That I can make the findings for the variance. I can make the findings for the design review. I can make the findings for the demolition. And I can make the recommendation to city council to update the existing renewable or revocable license. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex.
Thank you. So this is a very interesting project. I'm going to, in my remarks, I'm going to kind of back into it, starting with the parking issue of which we've heard quite a bit tonight. I'm sympathetic to the neighbors. I understand you have conditions that is, Pat pointed out, are quite prevalent on the island. It somewhat comes with the territory. The way I look at this, the, the property is required to add a couple of additional parking spaces to bring it into conformance with our zoning. And the question is, you know, where is the appropriate place to do that? Some of you may know that in my, my day job, I'm an architect and I'm often tasked with right at the beginning of the project, figuring out where is the appropriate access for the site? And that's a very important and key decision for any development, large or small. I happen to think that the Acacia access for the driveway is the correct place to put the parking for this site. We do have a letter from a traffic engineer. It confirms everything that my instincts told me from my experience that the San Rafael location would not be a very safe or effective location. And particularly, I don't think you'd want to see a car backing out onto that blind curve. I did say I'm sympathetic to the neighbors. I live on a street in Belvedere that has constrained parking. And we all kind of accommodate each other. We, in our minds, we have our own parking space and our neighbors respect that. I know if this project gets approved, it may disrupt your patterns to a, some extent, but hopefully not to a major extent. I did visit the Acacia numerous times over the past week at different times of day to kind of observe what the parking dynamic was there. And I never saw every space taken. There usually were numerous spaces. I think what we're talking about here is, you know, an adjustment to people's patterns if the project does get approved. There's a second component that I wanted to mention regarding why I favor the ADU and garage where they are. I think that the, the perception of this significant architectural building from San Rafael is best if it's not interrupted by a driveway or a parking structure. And by moving this garage back toward Acacia, I think the relationship between that structure and the, what will be the new house is really the best solution. I'm sure you all were familiar with the amount of time that the planning commission spent reviewing Mallard Point. And one of the things that I think we were able to accomplish is to really minimize the effect of the parking garage, parking garages along San Rafael. And none of them will take access from San Rafael Avenue, which I, I think is going to be one of the more successful aspects of the project. So as we see the center of town evolving, hopefully we have this kind of coherent kind of town center, city center with the city hall, the apartment building, townhouses. And now the church, which is going to become a residence, is going to become part of that whole ensemble. And I think the improvements to the landscape and the setting are really going to be pivotal, pivotal to pulling the, the center together. I like the, I'm impressed with the floor plan. I've been in the building. I'm very interested to see how the architect turned it into a very livable residential space. The materials look good. I will add, because there were questions about the windows. I'm familiar with the window manufacturer that they're using. It's an extremely high quality European window, above, way above average. And I think that that will really add to the overall design of the project. So I will be able to make findings in favor of all four motions this evening. You know, there could be additional work, I think, that could be explored in the future regarding striping and improving parking along Acacia. But I'm prepared to make the findings for this project at this time.
Thank you. Jenna.
Hi, thanks very much. First, I'd just like to state that before we moved to Belvedere, we lived in the Georgetown section of Washington DC in a church that had been converted to a house. We lived there for 14 years. I absolutely loved it. The house had a soul. It had a great feeling. And I have every expectation that this church will also make a tremendous house that has, that has a soul. So just want to add that. And, and when we renovated our house, we did put in low end windows. Before I get, I get to the parking, I want to say that I, I can make the, the findings for the design review, for the demolition, for the revocable license. I would like to add that I think that encroachment permit should be explored if it's, if it's applicable with respect to the sidewalk and, and also depending on, on public, on, on public works for the exploration of an additional parking spot on the 45 degree area. One thing, one thing that we've heard tonight again and again is that Acacia has a serious car problem and a parking problem and a narrow street problem. And while I do appreciate that that is a problem that is prevalent on our island in various, in various places. I live on Oak Avenue, which my kids call Snake Mountain for obvious reasons. But the difference with Acacia and, and say Cliff Road is that as, as some of our, of our neighbors have pointed out, Acacia gets used for, by lots of people who are not residents. People are going to Belvedere Park, people who are coming here to City Hall and people who are, who are going to the yacht club or other locations. So, you know, I, I do feel like while there is a current parking problem on Acacia, which could be exacerbated, well, I guess would be exacerbated by having an additional garage, which would take away one and a half parking spots. I want to point out that we're, that the home is required to have two parking spots. And I'm not sure from the plans whether there's, whether there would be space, not only in the garage, but also on the, on the apron in front of the garage that would accommodate the, the, the two, the two spots, thus taking two cars off of Acacia as well. But I, I was wondering whether we could explore other avenues for trying to make the parking situation on Acacia more love, more livable even as it is now. So in addition to the exploration of, of extra parking, parking space, space, not a space, but just space as, as Chair Johnson had, had brought up earlier and the striping, which our neighbor brought up. But also I note that. But also, I note that our neighbors who live on Beach Road, which also gets used by lots of non-Belvederians and non-people, they have parking passes. They have parking stickers that don't look like mine, that enable them to have a special parking designation. I don't know whether that's something that the city could explore as well, for people who live on Acacia or Acacia and Laurel. I'm throwing it out there as an idea, to try to make what's already a current parking issue more palatable. All that being said, I do agree that as a new, single-family house is required to have two parking spots, the best place that I can see in terms of safety, planning, et cetera, is probably the garage on the garage with the opening on Acacia. I recognize that we can't condition approval or the findings on anything that Public Works has to, you know, has to do, or permits from the police, et cetera. But I do think that the city should consider measures to make the parking situation on Acacia more palatable. So all of that being said, I can make the findings for the variance as well.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, thank you. I think I am going to align myself with the comments of Commissioner Williams. I can certainly make the findings on the first three and on the fourth, probably as well. But obviously, there's room here to tackle the parking issue on Acacia. This, in a sense, represents an opportunity to do that. I will say that I did try lots of different ways to figure out how a driveway leading on to San Rafael Avenue would work. I drove that spot a few times at 25 miles an hour, and then I drove it at the speed at which I normally drive it at and what other people do as well. In good conscience, I couldn't approve support having a driveway on San Rafael at that point. That would be, you know, safety first. That seems to be kind of our first obligation here. And so trading that off versus inconveniences, you hate that to be your choice, but that might be a little bit of it here. I can't see anything short of leveling the hillside and creating another lane of traffic that might improve that line of sight to what the ASHTO standards are. So I could not personally find a way to envision how a San Rafael driveway would work. So with that in mind, I can certainly support the findings.
Thank you. Justin?
Thank you for the application and the future stewardship of a beautiful structure if it is approved. I concur with my fellow commissioners that I can make the findings. I have one question about the planning code as far as it relates to turning radius. Is there anything in Belvedere planning code that does relate to requirements around access to driveway or garage?
We have it in our code. It's not in Chapter 19 or 20. It's in the engineering section of the code. And we don't have a vision triangle-type measurement either, but we defer to Marin County Code. And I'm guessing we would also refer to Marin County Code there, too, but I can find out for you.
And so if there were any issues with access for emergency vehicles that wouldn't fall under the purview of design review or planning?
No, but we route the plans to fire engineering and building just for that very reason, to make sure that they vet the plans at the Planning Commission level for safety.
Thank you. I can make the findings, and thank you for preserving a spectacular structure.
Thank you. So I will start off by saying that I am, overall, very supportive of the spirit of this project. Love it or hate it, it's a very interesting piece of architecture in the heart of the city. And I really appreciate the applicant's desire to maintain and preserve what I think is a really important piece of mid-century modern architecture. However, I think I'm in the minority tonight, but I think, as has already been discussed at length, I think the biggest issue is the placement of the garage and the ADU. I think that this is an issue that many people have in Belvedere. There are many, many places where there are blind corners. I can think of a whole section of San Rafael Avenue by West Shore that is particularly scary. Golden Gate Avenue, you've got garages with no visibility coming in and out all the time. I think this is a place, actually, where you have much more sightline than in many other places where there currently is parking. I would have liked to see a plan that explored alternatives. When I met with the applicant, we talked about potentially getting an easement to widen the driveway on San Rafael Avenue, using a portion in front of Farley Place, or next to, rather, even as a place to turn the car around. You could just have a larger place, so you're not actually backing out. You could pull out and then pull forward out of the space. I think that there's also a possibility to lower the grade slightly, not remove the hill, but lower it slightly, remove some of the planting, so that then you've got at least 100 feet. And we talked about this as well in context of the buildings themselves. And I think actually having the garage below the ADU is, to me, just a much more harmonious structure, better Feng Shui to live above the garage than beneath it. There's also the possibility of, if you were to reorient these buildings, that you could follow the same roof line as the original building. And I think having those two buildings in conversation with each other would actually create a much more harmonious street frontage. So having looked at this very carefully and gone back many times, I do think there is more room to explore other alternatives here that actually would give you more room to, again, create a little bit more symmetry in terms of the architecture and roof line between the two structures, so that they don't feel so separate and disparate. I also have some other comments about just landscaping. I think that when I walk by that church, I think that there are sections of it, when I look over, I think it's very sparse and sort of balding and patchy. I think there's a lot of opportunity to do some more sort of planting. I might even consider not impacting sightlines at all, but I might consider planting some ginkgo trees to match what is across the street. It could create a really beautiful sort of alley there. And it's a really kind of important nexus of activity and buildings in the city. You've got City Hall, you've got the park. It's very trafficked and important, and I think it would really create a nice moment there for people walking, to have both sides. And then suddenly, they're in conversation with each other, which I think could be really nice. There's a very sort of prickly and off-putting plant right beneath the stop sign that really, I feel, warns people away from walking on that path, which I don't think many people know is public. I think there's an opportunity to remove that and put something that really clearly marks that there's a public sidewalk, and it's inviting people to walk that path. I would also like to see more planting on that upper level. I think you are adding a lot of glass, and it would be helpful just for some screening and shielding and helping with some light pollution up there. We talked about this as well. Many other commissioners have spoken about this, too. But if there's a way to extend the parking pad at the very back corner of the property, where cars are already parking, I think it would be just a huge win, not just for you, but for the whole neighborhood. And there is ample space to do it. Now, how that's worked out, I'm not sure. It's probably in the form of a revocable license, and it would have to be looked at closely. But I think there's opportunity to do that. Again, I am in the minority here, but I think the spire is the least attractive part of the building. One of the purposes of a spire is to let community members know where the church is. It's no longer a church, so I don't think it's necessary, but I will leave it because I think I'm the only one. So as it currently stands, I think that enough has come up tonight, that it's -- there is still other avenues to be explored here in terms of the garage location. So I would not be able to make the findings. Thank you. So do we need a motion?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution granting design review for the property located at 501 San Rafael.
Second.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion two, adopt the resolution granting a demolition permit to demolish the existing 436-square-foot auxiliary structure at 501 San Rafael.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, adopt the resolution granting a variance to construct a detached garage within the 15-foot rear and 15-foot side setback at 501 San Rafael Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Recommend, motion four, recommend City Council approval to updating an existing revocable license for new private improvements located in the public right-of-way at 501 San Rafael.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Should I vote for this? I'm not sure I'm hearing your vote.
Okay, am I required to vote on each measure?
Yes.
Understood.
Thank you. Can we go back? Can you give us your vote on the motions? Motion one was design review. Motion two was demolition.
Variance for the garage and then revocable license.
If you could just...
Aye on all counts.
Thank you very much.
Did any of the commissioners want the design review conditioned? A few things came up, just...
Yeah, I mean, I would love to have the design review conditioned upon an exploration of additional consideration for parking on Acacia, but that's public works and the city.
The attorney has already said we can't condition that.
Right.
So I think that basically...
A slight tweak to that. You could have imposed a condition stating that the applicant will pay for these improvements, the striping and the new public parking, subject to the approval of Public Works. However, you've already taken the vote now approving the resolutions. You would have to pass a motion for reconsideration to redo that and add the conditions.
And you could just do that to the -- that would be for the design review resolution. The other three motions stay. You could reopen, sorry, reconsider the first motion.
So we need a motion to reconsider the...
All right, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the vote, or I guess the consideration -- a motion to reconsider the design review resolution.
I don't think I could do that. I mean, I don't know if I could approve a condition that we don't even know Public Works, and to require the applicant to pay for striping down the whole street seems a little bit excessive, in my book. I mean, you know, if he's willing to do some additional pavement, you know, to get that additional parking, but, I mean, I don't know. I don't -- it's kind of unusual to require an applicant to stripe a whole street. I mean, maybe stripe around his garage, but, I mean, to stripe the whole street seems excessive. And, I mean, we don't even know what Public Works is going to say. I think it's more resident-driven campaign, that if you come in to the city and talk to Tony Boyd, who's our Public Works Director, we had a situation up on Eucalyptus and Golden Gate not too long ago. The residents got together. They went out, they looked at it, and they agreed with what the residents wanted to do, and they had it taken care of. But it was resident-driven, and I just don't think that, at this point, we can require the applicant to do roadway improvements. I mean, if he's willing to pay for the additional parking, that's one thing out of his generosity. But, I mean, for us to condition that he actually has to pay for all this is not something I could vote for personally.
Okay.
Well, I also might add, if the residents do organize, it doesn't preclude the applicant from participating and even contributing to that. And he seems like a very fair-minded individual, so...
As a new resident of Acacia Avenue.
Yeah, I think we can kind of let the process unfold.
All right, then I withdraw my motion.
Do we need to...
It's great ideas that they have, you know, to try and get an extra parking space and to do the striping. But I think it's a little bit extreme to place it upon the applicant to be, you know, responsible, make sure this happens, which is what the condition would do. And we don't know what Public Works is going to say.
Okay.
So then we're okay, because there was no second to Jenna's reconsideration?
No. So the original motion stands. Okay. All right, well, congratulations to the applicant. To close the meeting.
We can adjourn the meeting.
Okay, I'd like to adjourn the meeting.
Yes. Thank you.